Welcome to the August twenty-sixth meeting of the MCCSC Board of School Trustees. We ask that you please come to order. Tonight, we'll begin with the public hearing on teacher compensation. In two thousand and nineteen, Indiana Codes twenty, twenty-nine, six, one, and nineteen were amended to require that before formal collective bargaining, parties must hold a public hearing and take public testimony regarding teacher compensation. I want to thank Superintendent Winston and MCEA President Noble Cuchara for being the co-hosts for this evening. We will now proceed with public comments on formal collective bargaining on behalf of the co-hosts. We have one comment card, I think? We have one comment card, and that is from President Noble Cuchara.
Good evening MCCSC School Board members and Superintendent Winston. I'm Jenny Noble Cuchara, the president of and exclusive representative for our local teachers' union. Next month, the MCEA will begin the collective bargaining process. Everyone here knows that the state has robbed us of the funding public schools across the state need. Although it is indecent to have denied students what they deserve, we soldier on. We teach them that perseverance is a life skill. Indiana Code twenty, twenty-nine, six, four reads that "The subjects of bargaining are that a school employer shall bargain collectively with the exclusive representative on the following: Salary, wages, salary and wage-related fringe benefits, including accident, sickness, health, dental, vision, life, disability, retirement benefits, and paid time off as permitted." No one this year expects a significant raise, but we do expect to bargain in good faith for an agreement that respects the dignity and needs of all teachers in the bargaining unit. This school year is underway with fewer teachers than last year. We strive every day to do our best. We persevere. In turn, we will execute ourselves as good-faith bargainers. To us, this means the possibility of items like improved and just leaves, medical, dental, and vision insurance that will not empty our wallets before the paycheck has even been deposited, support for teachers' continued professional growth, and more. At the start of my own teaching career in MCCSC, my children were eligible due to my salary for free and reduced lunch. Later, I made just too much for them to qualify as twenty-first century scholars. I could never afford our extended-day program, so they learned what to do at faculty meetings. I want our next generation of teachers, who are also parents, to have an easier time. I want them to get closer to not having second jobs and not living paycheck to paycheck. To show our intent in bargaining in good faith and to demonstrate the critical need for a fair bargaining agreement, many attendees are here this evening wearing red. Red for Ed, for public education the way it should be. Teachers creating the love of learning in every student because they are buoyed by the knowledge that their contract reflects decent pay, benefits that meet their family's needs, and stability for our whole community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Noble Cuchara. I think that's the last of the comments on the public hearing. So on behalf of the co-hosts, I will close the hearing. Thank you, Dr. Winston and President Noble Cuchara. We will now open the regular meeting of the board. Tonight, we honor the excellence of MCCSC's dedicated employees, students, and volunteers who make a difference in our school community. Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Vice President Cooperman, Dr. Winston, the Board of Trustees, and community members. It's my pleasure to share this month's Excellence Spotlight. This is a feature of every regular Board of School Trustees meeting and is dedicated time to honor the excellence occurring every day through the dedication of MCCSC employees, students, and volunteers. This month's August Excellence Spotlight is Patty Sadler, Templeton Elementary Office Administrative Assistant. We are proud to recognize Patty Sadler as exemplifies dedication and service in her role at Templeton Elementary, consistently going above and beyond to support students, staff, and families. Her warm professional demeanor creates a welcoming environment for all who enter the school. In addition to her daily responsibilities, Patty generously shares her expertise by mentoring fellow administrative assistants, contributing to a culture of collaboration and growth. With sixteen years of committed service to our corporation, Patty continues to be a valued and inspiring member of our team. Thank you, Patty, for your unwavering commitment and the positive impact you make every day.
Make sure it's as awkward as possible for you. On behalf of the board, thank you, Ms. Harmon, and congratulations, Ms. Sadler, for your work in making a difference for our corporation. Dr. Winston, I understand that you would like to recognize several employees for some honors that they received recently.
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. The Monroe County Community School Corporation received a gold award for the USDA Turn Up the Beat Program for its two thousand and twenty-four summer meals. To qualify, summer food service programs had to plan and provide nutritious menus using fresh and/or locally grown foods for students. I'd like to congratulate Child Nutrition Director Matt Tomrell and the food service staff for their highly competitive honor, and thank you also for providing our children with nutritious meals throughout the year. Mr. Tomrell, if you could come forward to the podium and acknowledge all you had to take on to receive this award. And can we also say that nobody else in the state of Indiana receives such acknowledgement?
Yeah, my other school is only school in Indiana, which is cool. So I brought some team members with me to introduce, which is really cool. There's over fifty, almost fifty-five years of experience standing behind me. And we have our staff coordinator, Ms. Stacy English, going on her ninth year. And then we have Ms. Sharon Stanton going in over twenty years at Templeton right now. And then the eldest one here, Ms. Angie Lucas from Highland Park, going on twenty-five years. Not present with us tonight is our nutrition coordinator, Wesley Pedland, whom we should acknowledge too for his efforts. Maybe he's online. That's for you, Wesley. Just some numbers, because I do love my numbers. This was an award given for our service in two thousand and twenty-four. We served over ten thousand meals over the summer. And you know, for many students over the summer, they don't have access to food because most summer programs, school programs, shut down. So to be able to serve over ten thousand free meals was pretty cool. This past summer, we did forty-six percent increase. We were almost at fifteen thousand total meals over the summer, which is really cool. And I just want to thank you, both the board, Dr. Winston, Dr. Henderson, for your support. You know, we couldn't do this without your support. We hope to be able to bring home the gold again next year. Thanks a lot, everyone, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Tomrell, and the other child nutrition staff. That's such an important part of what we do at MCCSC. Oh, you have more? Okay, keep going.
Yes, Ms. Shehadi. She's our business office manager for MCCSC, and she has completed her required courses and fulfilled all the personal, ethical, and professional requirements established by the Indiana School Board Association to receive the IASBO Assistant Chief Business Officer Certification Designation. Congratulations to Ms. Shehadi for this outstanding achievement. And finally, the Greater Bloomington Chamber will host its annual community awards on September eleventh. Two MCCSC employees will be recognized as outstanding educators. Ashley Sotomayor, first grade Spanish immersion teacher at Summit Elementary, and Angie Evans, principal for the Academy of Science and Entrepreneurship and MCCSC Online. We look forward to celebrating with both of them at the Chamber Awards.
On behalf of the board, thank you, Dr. Winston, and congratulations to all who've been recognized. We will now receive our quarterly update on the activities of the MCCSC Foundation from the Foundation Director, Mrs. Helm.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice President Cooperman, Dr. Winston, and other school board members. I probably better put them back on. I'm used to the up and down, but I won't be able to see this. So I'm thrilled to see so much faculty here. And this is a reminder to you, our grant program's closing September fifth. So that's the first cycle, just one cycle, that will be closing that quickly. And then the second cycle will open back up on November first and close January thirty-first. So we're adjusting the dates on the programs a little bit to try to be more flexible and supportive to the faculty and get the funding into the classrooms at a better time in the year. So that's a lot of the feedback that we have heard. It's just trying to make it earlier in the year rather than later. So that's what we're trying to do in order to bring that in. This year, my board has approved a budget of seventy-five thousand in grant dollars. That's what we did last year, and so we're excited to see what innovative ideas come through. And I want to thank my grant team, which is building reps inside of all the buildings, that will be reading those as they close this time around and getting things going. I also want to take it this time, it's the early part of the year, and we're doing a lot of reviewing on employee giving. It's a time where I just really want to express my deepest gratitude. We have one hundred and thirty-seven MCCSC employees who currently give to the foundation through payroll deduction. Their generosity is making a real difference every single day because we take those contributions and they go directly into that teacher grant program. That's the only thing we allow those funds to be spent for, and they're there to help empower educators that bring innovative ideas to life in their classrooms. So as we start a school year, I would just like to encourage any employee to consider joining in that movement with your fellow teams. A gift as simple as a dollar or two dollars a pay period doesn't seem like a lot. It's twenty-six dollars a year or fifty-two dollars a year, but when you take those gifts and you combine them up collectively, they really do make a difference. Just to run the numbers for you, since Matt teed me up for running numbers, there's about two thousand employees inside of MCCSC. If everybody gave a dollar a pay period, twenty-six dollars annually, that's fifty-two thousand dollars. So it does make a difference, and I think a lot of times people overlook small gifts and think, "I can't do that." But I just encourage you to look and see if you are physically able to do something. Room and Read will start in October. That is our kindergarten program where we match up a volunteer from the community. They go in, they read to the students, and we're also helping build their home library. So we have five good books that we will be reading this year, and every single one of those children gets a copy of that book, and they're able to take it in. I want to thank German American Bank. They are one of our supporters for this program this year, and we couldn't do it without having their contributions. Reading, Writing, Bidding. Okay, it's been going on for like twelve years, so everybody should know what it is by now. The Annual Online Auction, November tenth through the eighteenth. Mark your calendars. It'll go live November tenth and closes on November eighteenth. And our goal's twenty thousand dollars that goes back into the educational programs. We are looking for volunteers to help with the committee, to get out into the community, and help us build that fundraiser. The more items we have to bid on, the more money we make, and the more you get to bid and have fun. So if you know of any regional or local businesses that would like to donate, have them give me a call, or I'll reach out to them if you just want to shoot me their name and contacts. And lastly, I had a blast on the first couple of days of school. We threw out a social media back-to-school grant, and it was a lot of fun. We had over five thousand people engaging on the post. So it was a lot of fun, and I just want to do a congratulations to Highland Park. You were the Wheel of, what's that called, Alexis? The Wheel of Fortune spin there. So they came up. What's amazing when you do those kind of things, again, back to the stats and the numbers. Highland Park didn't have the most entries in. They had a lot, but they still won. So you never know. You never know in those types of things. So congratulations to you guys all, and thanks for playing. Everybody that got into the social media with us, it was a lot of fun. So thank you.
On behalf of the board, thank you, Mrs. Helm. Do we have any public comments? Okay, so we're gonna skip over public comments. Now for our consideration is the consent agenda that includes the following: Memorandum from executive session and minutes from the regular board meeting held on June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five; memorandum from executive session held on August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five; overnight out-of-state field trips; financial report from July two thousand and twenty-five; appropriation balance report, July two thousand and twenty-five; register of claims, August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five; payroll register and payroll claims, July two thousand and twenty-five; request to declare as surplus and authorize disposal of out-of-date items. Do I have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Tiana that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Abstentions, the motion carries. Next for our consideration are the donations. We have received donations of over nine thousand dollars. Thank you to all our donors. Your generosity is appreciated. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So moved.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Ashley and seconded by Erin Wyatt that we approve the, that we accept the donations as presented. All those in favor of the motion to approve the donations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, abstentions, the motion carries. Next for our consideration is the instructional materials related to human sexuality. Do I have a motion to approve the instructional materials as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Asia that we approve the instructional materials related to human sexuality as presented. Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Vice President Cooperman, Dr. Winston, and members of the board. Per Indiana Senate Enrolled Act four-four-two, the governing body of a school corporation shall publish a list of any instructional materials used in connection with instruction on human sexuality on the school's website. I recommend that the board approve the comprehensive listing of instructional materials related to human sexuality.
Do we have any comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the instructional materials related to human sexuality signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, any abstentions, motion carried. Next for our consideration is the personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ashley and seconded by Tiana that we approve the personnel report as presented. Dr. Henderson?
Vice President Cooperman, Dr. Winston, and members of the Board of School Trustees, this evening, I would like to call your attention to the following retirement: In support staff, Connie Cleary. Ms. Cleary has been with MCCSC for ten years, most recently serving as a preventionist at Summit Elementary School. On behalf of MCCSC, I would like to extend a special thank you to Ms. Cleary for her years of dedicated service and wish her well in her next adventures. At this time, I request that you please approve the recommendations as presented in your board packet in the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Do we have any comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion to approve the personnel report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, abstentions, motion carries. We will now move to the contracts. Do I have a motion to approve the contracts as presented?
So moved.
Let's go with Ashley. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ashley and seconded by Ross that we approve the contracts as presented. Mr. Irwin?
Call attention to two of the contracts that are at Fairview Elementary for the Performing Arts Program, so those are referendum-supported. So just want to thank the community for their continued support of the referendums.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Do we have any comments from the board? I just reiterate the thanks that Mr. Irwin mentioned to the community for supporting the arts program at Fairview. All those in favor of the motion to approve the contracts signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, abstentions, motion carried. Next for our consideration is the authorization to advertise the two thousand and twenty-six budget. Do I have a motion to approve the authorization to advertise the two thousand and twenty-six budget as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Asia that we approve the authorization to advertise the two thousand and twenty-six budget as presented. Mr. Irwin?
I'll wait a second here for the presentation to come up on the screen. Okay, so the purpose of this is, again, to go through some highlights of the two thousand and twenty-six budget, talk through some normal processes, procedures, as it relates to the budget, so everyone's aware. I know a couple of the board members are new. So again, right now, every year as we roll through this, August is when we're looking for permission to advertise. September is when we have our hearing on the budget, where the public has a chance to come in and make comment on the budget. And then October is when the board would vote to approve the budget. So right now, we're set to advertise the budget on September second. That has to be at least ten days prior to the public hearing, which is scheduled for September twenty-third. And then again, that'll also include the bus replacement and capital projects plans that are posted to Gateway and the school website as well. Form three is the notice to the taxpayers, and so we'll look at that a little bit later here in the presentation. But again, the bus replacement and capital projects plans, those are necessary through the process in order to be able to expend operations fund dollars on those types of expenditures. Those are plans. They're not set in stone, but they're plans for things that we think may come up or possible expenditures in the upcoming calendar year. So we put those together with the appropriate staffing. We continue to review those as we get closer and closer to making those decisions about whether or not those would be something that we do. But again, it's something that we have to do through the process. The next part on this is, as we go through this, the Department of Local Government Finance, best practices, we input eighty-five percent of last year's AV into Gateway when we do the budget process. This is something that's very typical across the state, what most school corporations do. They don't put in the actual, they allow the DLGF rep to do that as they go through the budgeting process. And what that does is it makes sure that the tax rates and the levies are high enough where when we advertise the budget, we set a ceiling for where we're at in the budget and our levies, and we can always work down from there. So we want to make sure that we set a conservative ceiling, make sure that we protect the budgets of the school, and that we get the things that we need. So that's something that every school corporation does, and that's accounted for in there. And then we just monitor that throughout the school year. So if you go on to the next slide, please. In this slide, I want, draw your attention to the yellow box. I think that that's the important takeaway from this. But as you see, most of the budgets, and again, budgets are just, those are the possible expenditures that we think could have happened during that calendar year. And when we're putting together those budgets, we're trying to account for a lot of unknowns, whether that's ATM, whether that's where we're at with staffing, whether that's with costs for non-personnel expenditures, those sorts of things. So we put together those guardrails, that budget of what we think are possible. And as you know, most of those are down. The overall budget submission is down about six point two million dollars from two thousand and twenty-five. And again, that makes sense in light of the things that we're working through. And then also, you see on there the school pension debt piece as well, and I'll talk about that here in a little bit. But again, I just wanted to give you some comparison purposes of the two thousand and twenty-six budget to the two thousand and twenty-five. Again, that white bar is the two thousand and twenty-five, and the blue bar is the two thousand and twenty-six. Move on to the next one. So again, just some reiterations of those pieces. So the Education Operations Fund, the budgets are smaller than last year, and that's based on conservative revenue, enrollment projections, staffing changes, all of those pieces. Bus replacement and capital projects plan, again, those have to be submitted in order to expend operational fund dollars on those types of possible expenditures. And again, I underline "possible" because those are plans, not set in stone. And then with our referendum funds, we plan to restore the original voter-approved rate of eighteen and a half cents. We weren't able to do that last year because of some legislative pieces. We do plan to do that this year. And then referendum two for two thousand and twenty-three, continuing with the voter-approved rate of eight and a half cents, and then continuing to support the expansion of the three-year-old programming. And then a couple of quick notes on debt service and pension. Those are, we put placeholders in debt service as it relates to anticipated debts. And so we work with Baker Tilly to set, again, high ceiling numbers that we know that will work underneath because we need to make sure that we set the appropriate guardrails when we advertise the budget. And then the pension debt, a quick note on that is we'll make our last two payments on our pension debt, and then that will be retired in two thousand and twenty-six. Let you move on. This is just meant to show you what will actually get posted to Gateway. The top portion of this is what is typical for every school across the state. So this just simply has the information about when our hearing is, where our hearing is. Same for adoption meeting, and just some of that routine information that every school corporation has on their Gateway piece. Let you move to the next slide. And then this is the bottom part of the form. Again, this shows column two, that's the budget. Again, this shows, uh, column two, that's the budgets. Those are the guardrails of what we think our spending could be. That's, that's the authority to spend. That's what the budget is. And then column three is simply the ceiling of what would be needed from the community in order to support those budgets along with our already cash balances that we have in hand, or other revenues that go into those funds. And so again, we set high ceilings that we know that will work underneath, but we set those higher ceilings because that's something that when we advertise, that's what we need to make sure that we, that we've done that appropriately. So again, just a, a quick reminder on some of those pieces is that column two, that's the authority to spend. That's just the budgeted amount, kind of like we would in our own budget, say, I've got X amount of dollars to spend in this area. I'm trying to make sure that I put an appropriate amount of money that's there, and if I don't need to spend it all, we won't. But we've got to create those guardrails for ourselves. And then column three is just the, um, the money that would need to be raised from the community to support those budgets along with our current cash balances and other revenues that come into those funds. So wanted to just give you, um, a kind of a quick overview of the 2026 budget. We'll do a, a more in-depth presentation, uh, at the September meeting for the hearing. Um, but again, just wanted to, to ask for your permission to advertise that, to get that out on September second. And we'll review that one more time before we push it out. Continue to review that to make sure we're good. I'll probably review with Baker, Baker Tilly one more time.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Do I have any comments from the board?
Thanks for your work. You know, it's a lot.
So, no, I got a question. Cause I keep looking at it. Um, you said raise funds from community members, you talking about the referendum?
Yeah, so we have, we have multiple funds that are tax levied funds. We have our two referendum funds, our operations fund and our debt service fund. So those are the tax levied funds that we have. Um, so when you look at the bottom part of that form three, like the education fund, for example, there was zero there because the education fund is not a fund that's supported, um, through the community. That's through tuition support and the state and the other revenues that come into that. So that's, that's why you see numbers in column three for those funds and not in the education fund because those funds are actually tax, property tax supported funds. Yeah, that's a great question.
I didn't know if Sorel needs to do some more work or not.
Right, um, hearing no more comments. All those in favor of the motion to approve the authorization to advertise the 2026 budget as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Abstentions. Motion carries. Next for our consideration is Resolution 2025 dash oh nine, determining the need for the project. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025 oh nine as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Ashley that we adopt Resolution 2025 dash oh nine as presented. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so this dates back to the, uh, Designing and Building to Sustain Excellence Project that you guys went through the authorizations for earlier in the year. Again, this, the, uh, act, the academic need and educational need for the project relates to renovations and improvements to facilities throughout the school corporation, including site improvements and purchases of buses, equipment, and technology. Recommend your approval, please.
Do I have any comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash oh nine, determining the need for the project signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Abstentions. Motion carried. Next for our consideration is Resolution 2025 dash one zero, approving form of lease. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash ten as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Asia that we adopt the Resolution 2025 dash ten, approving form of lease as presented. Mr. Bunker?
Dr. Winston, members of the board, I think this is the first time for those of you on the board that we have, we have participated in a lease project which involves a building corporation. So you will be seeing some different documents as this process goes forward versus general obligation bonds, which I know you all have worked on. This is based upon a lease between the building corporation and the school corporation. And what we're asking for you this evening is to approve the form of the lease. And this evening, that means we approve the form and it's, the next thing we do is we set a date, an announcement that will run in the paper for a hearing coming up on the exact form and numbers in that lease. So that's the purpose of this first resolution, to inform, to approve the lease in the form of it. Uh, and so you know, it's been reviewed by myself, it's been reviewed by bond council. So we're, we're familiar with the document. It's, it should be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Bunker. Do I have any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash ten, approving form of lease signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Abstentions. Motion carried. Next for our consideration is Resolution 2025 dash eleven, reapproving of building corporation. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash eleven as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Ashley that we adopt the Resolution 2025 dash eleven, reapproving of building corporation as presented. Mr. Bunker?
Or at least it takes two parties. You're the, you're the first party, the second party is the building corporation. This nineteen ninety-six building corporation has served the corporation for many, many lease bond issues. And all we're asking you to do is to reapprove the existence of this corporation. Would recommend approval.
All those in favor of the motion to adopt, oh, maybe, sorry, thank you, Mr. Bunker. Do I have any comments? Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash eleven, reapproving of building corporations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Abstentions. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have several informative updates to be presented. The first is the quarterly update on the two-year strategy and financial transparency. Dr. Winston, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice President Cooperman and Board of School Trustees. Tonight, we will be providing our second quarterly update on the status of our two-year strategy toward achieving financial balance. As a friendly reminder to the board and to the community, I want to briefly highlight the timeline leading us to today. Thirteen months ago, when I first began as interim superintendent, it just feels like yesterday. The Board of School Trustees, no, it really feels longer, uh, tasked me with examining the corporation finances, and I did so by hiring policy analytics in July of 2024 to conduct an analysis of our five-year financial forecast and cash flow projections. As a result of their analysis and the work of then CFO, Mr. John Kinney, I learned that a structural imbalance existed and that our expenditures were outpacing our revenue, primarily due to declining enrollment. After further analysis, review, and confirmation in February of this year, we publicly announced this imbalance and began rolling out the components of a two-year strategy focused on achieving financial balance. To be clear, we defined financial balance as, one, making sure that our expenditures do not outpace our revenue. Two, living within our means. And three, reducing our expenditures while increasing cash flow. Three months ago in May, just three months ago, we provided our first quarterly update and financial transparency report. And this evening, we are providing our second quarterly update and financial transparency report as part of our commitment to maintain open communication, transparency, and accountability on the financial health of our corporation. Our strategy is and will continue to be a multi-pronged approach to ensuring that our staffing levels are directly proportional to the number of students enrolled in our schools. Tonight's update is an opportunity for us to report to the board, our employees, and the larger Bloomington community how much progress we have made at the six-month mark of our twenty-four-month strategy. There are four key takeaways or points for tonight's update. One, the combination of local population declines and state and federal financial impacts have significantly decreased current and future revenue for our corporation. Two, in spite of these difficult headwinds, I am pleased to report that we are making steady progress as a corporation. Three, our executive team has taken a measured and deliberate approach as we have addressed these challenges. And four, we will need to remain nimble and flexible as we continue to adjust to the known and unknown impacts at the state and federal level that threaten our funding. As I shared with you back in February, our first priority is increasing operational efficiency while thoughtfully and deliberately establishing, establishing appropriate staffing levels that align with student enrollment. In so doing, it is our intent, wherever possible, to minimize impacts on classroom instruction. My number one task as superintendent is to stabilize our budget while also ensuring our focus on excellence in all that we do. The challenge in telling our story is making sure that our community understands these four facts. One, we are experiencing a population decline here in Monroe County, and it is most notable in working adults aged twenty-five to forty-four. Two, we are experiencing a decline in state funding. We are experiencing a decline in state funding that we receive, and we fully expect this decrease to continue into the future. In 2025 alone, we have lost approximately one point five million dollars due to the elimination of the Curricular Materials Grant. And we expect this loss to continue for at least the next seven years. Three, school districts across the country received ESAR dollars in the early days of the pandemic, and those dollars have recently ended. And there have been reductions or threats of reductions to the federal dollars that schools rely upon to supplement sorts, supports and services to our children. And four, we continue to experience increased costs in utilities, transportation, liability insurance, and other uncontrollable expenses. Because of these facts, MCCSC is experiencing declining enrollment, which has a direct impact on the revenue that we receive to support instruction. In recent years, corporation staffing levels were not adjusted to keep pace with declining enrollment. As a result of previously made decisions, my executive team and I, during the past six months, have been forced to make difficult but prudent decisions to make sure that our staffing levels throughout the corporation are directly aligned to actual student enrollment. In other words, we cannot live beyond our means. Earlier, I spoke about local, state, and federal headwinds that are impacting our fiscal reality. This next slide here attempts to highlight just a few, I said few, but it looks like twenty, um, of those headwinds. The breadth and depth of these headwinds are both complex, and they are also complicated. And how we respond to each one must take that into consideration. At the federal level, well, nobody really has any idea what cuts or where they may come from or how they will impact our schools, but we do know that they will impact our schools. We receive more than ten million dollars, um, at the federal level for dollars to support and supplement our instructional programs, more than ten million. At the state level, we can talk about early childhood, on my way pre-K, childcare and development fund dollars. Those dollars have been significantly reduced in the state of Indiana, and access to our most, um, needy children have been significantly reduced as well. If not for the 2023 referendum and our focus on family-friendly supports for our earliest and youngest learners, we would be in a difficult position if not for the generosity of our community in passing that 2023 referendum. My counterparts across the state don't have that luxury. We are losing over half a million dollars, um, in the early childhood area. Curricular Materials Grant, that's been eliminated and it's been lumped in. The, the, the small number of dollars have been lumped in to tuition support. That's problematic for us, and that's fewer dollars. And then tuition support, minimal new monies are expected for school corporations throughout the state. And at the local level, property tax legislation, SEA one, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But that is absolutely unequivocally going to result in decreased dollars for public schools throughout the state of Indiana. As part of our efforts to better understand the actual impact that we can expect, we've asked policy analytics to conduct an analysis of how much revenue MCCSC will not receive over the next several years. And population decline in Monroe County, that will also continue to impact our school revenue. Across the country, public school enrollment has been declining by more than seven percent since two thousand nineteen. And it is projected to continue to decline, and there are a number of factors impacting that. Similarly, Indiana is also experiencing an almost three percent decline in public school enrollment, and that's being experienced by more than sixty-seven percent of school corporations throughout the state. At the same time, choice scholarships have climbed more than thirty-one percent in Indiana over the past couple of years. And that is at a price tag of approximately four hundred and ninety-seven million dollars out of the public school funding. And for those of you who don't know, choice scholarships are those scholarships that are provided to families, many of whom have never stepped foot in public schools, but to receive public school dollars to send their children to a private school. This graph here shows the increase in the number of public school employees from two thousand fourteen to present across the country. While the number of students is significantly declining, and that's the blue line down below, during the same time period, the red line shows what the number of employees has looked like. Many of the dollars to support those employees were from the ESAR dollars. And once those ESAR dollars went away, it made it difficult for school systems to continue. We also recognize that declining birth rates across this country and some of the challenges that are being brought about relative to immigration um, are also contributing factors to our declining enrollment across our country. This graph here pretty much mirrors our realities locally from two thousand nineteen to present. Across the country, these are recent headlines, and by recent, I mean in the last several weeks, that capture what is happening to public education. Enrollment declines. Read the headlines. Teacher layoffs. Funding uncertainties. Budget cuts. As you look at these headlines, and they are numerous, from across our country, it would be an understatement to say that public education is at a crossroads. Locally, we are already beginning to feel the effects of state legislation and the amount of money we receive from our voter-approved referendum. In two thousand twenty-five, this year, we are already receiving approximately one point three million dollars less than our voters approved for us to receive to educate our children. As a result of SEA one, we anticipate the loss of additional many, many millions more due to decreased property tax revenue for schools, combined with the requirements to share revenue with local charter schools. Fortunately, we have a team of financial experts that we work with to assist us in responding and planning for these impacts. One of our financial experts, policy analytics, has been tasked with examining the year-over-year impact that SEA one will have on our corporation. The preliminary feedback is that the impact will be the loss of tens of millions of dollars over the next eight years. Throughout the state, we see daily and weekly headlines such as these regarding financial uncertainties faced by public schools here in the state of Indiana. And if you look at some of those headlines, you can see what our counterparts throughout the state of Indiana are experiencing. Locally, Monroe County is experiencing some significant demographic shifts. Population decline, low labor growth, high housing costs, all of those are factors that directly impact our ability to educate our children. Monroe County has experienced the largest population decline out of all ninety-two counties in the state of Indiana, with a noteworthy decline of approximately seven point seven percent of working-aged adults, twenty-five to forty-four, since the pandemic. As for our labor force, while the state is growing, Monroe County is experiencing a decline. The mayor, ROI, BEDC, and other local organizations have continued to collaborate on strengthening the economic engine within our community, and they are making strides every day. But as our community goes, so goes public schools. Affordable housing is a significant challenge in our community. Declining birth rates across the country, Indiana, and in our community has a direct impact on our school enrollment. How does this impact our schools, you might ask? Well, one of the most obvious ways is in the area of kindergarten enrollment. On this next graph, you will see that we have experienced a twenty-six percent decline in kindergarten enrollment since two thousand nineteen. In two thousand nineteen, we had eight hundred and nineteen kindergarteners. Last year, we had six hundred and nineteen, and you can see the brown line, how that's gone down. The gap is widening as our students graduate. We aren't bringing in more children to take those spaces. MCCSC is not the only corporation experiencing enrollment decline. In looking at the enrollment numbers of surrounding counties, they are being hit harder than MCCSC, as surprising as that may sound. This is what our trajectory of enrollment looks like. Based on recent enrollment trends and the research conducted by Preston Smith last year, we are we are estimating a continued decline of enrollment of approximately one point five percent between October count of two thousand twenty-four and October count of two thousand twenty-five. If we are correct, and we hope we are not, that loss of one hundred and fifty-one students would equate to a loss of an additional million dollars to the Education Fund. This is what we are up against, and this is why the Board of School Trustees has tasked me with addressing their two main priorities. Achieving financial balance and sustaining academic excellence, next slide. Later this evening, you will receive an update on all that we are doing to sustain academic excellence and the many accomplishments of our students. Mrs. Harmon is going to give you a very detailed report on all of the amazing accomplishments that are happening in our classrooms each and every day, at the hands of our teachers, through our students, and we are very excited to share that success. In spite of the difficult challenges that I've outlined for you this evening, we do remain steadfast in our commitment to balancing our budgets, even in the face of moving targets or goalposts and decreasing revenue. Slow and steady does in fact win the race, and we are making progress here at the six-month mark. Achieving financial balance means reducing expenditures, increasing efficiency, and increasing cash balances. A mere six months into our twenty-four month strategy, we are on track to save approximately eight point one million dollars by this time next year, if we stay the course with our staffing strategy. Staying the course means continuing to align our staffing levels to student enrollment. It means keeping the needs of our students at the center of all decision-making. It means continuing to prioritize excellence in all that we do. We are not there yet, but we are encouraged by our early progress, and we're not where we were one year ago. We will continue to use a measured approach to work to our work in our decision-making. The staffing plans that we are implementing will allow us to, one, sustain excellence in instruction and service delivery, two, service our students exceedingly well, and three, align our staffing to the amount of money we receive each year. Now, I would like to invite Dr. Henderson, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Operations, to provide, to provide us with a staffing update. Dr. Henderson?
Thank you, Dr. Winston, Vice President Cooperman, and members of the Board of School Trustees. First of all, I'd like to state that at the heart of every decision that we make regarding aligning staffing to our enrollment level is to ensure that we continue to provide excellent educational experiences for our students. From high-quality instruction, nutritious meals, clean and safe facilities, and comprehensive student supports, despite the challenges we are facing, we remain committed to providing what our students deserve and what our community has come to expect. As part of ensuring appropriate staffing levels across the district, the Human Resources Department applied clear, objective me- metrics consistent with other similarly sized schools and industry standards to ensure that staffing is both efficient and aligned with student needs. For custodial staff, we examined the number of employees relative to total square footage to make sure our facilities are properly maintained while remaining cost-effective. For healths, for school health services, we looked at caseloads per registered nurse to balance student health needs with available nursing resources. In the classroom, we analyzed average class size ratios to ensure students receive the appropriate level of attention, instruction, and support while also maintaining compliance with state and district guidelines. Finally, for child nutrition services, we reviewed the number of meals served per labor hour of staff to confirm that our food service operations are staffed to meet demand efficiently. By utilizing these objective measures, we are confident that our staffing levels are responsibly aligned with the needs of our students, operational requirements, and available funding. To give a specific example of how these staffing metrics were applied, let's take a closer look at health services. Using projected enrollment data and caseload per registered nurse, we were, we were able to redistribute staff across schools to ensure that the level of nursing support matched student needs more equitably. This redistribution allowed us to move to a more comprehensive delivery model of health services. The result has been an improvement in the quality and accessibility of care provided to our students. By balancing caseloads, building nurses now have more time to focus directly on students while also providing guidance and support to health aides and LPNs. This ensures that students receive timely care while also strengthening the overall health services team in each building. Given the enrollment decline MCCSC has experienced in recent years, it makes logical sense that staffing levels for almost eleven thousand students can't be the same when enrollment has declined to almost ten thousand students. One of the objective measures we continually evaluate is our average student-to-certificated staff ratio. This ratio is calculated by taking the total number of students enrolled and dividing that by the number of certificated staff members employed in the corporation. As you can see from this slide, the average student-to-certificated staff ratio for school years two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty through two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five was twelve point nine to one. This year, after natural attrition, again, retirements and resignations of certificated staff, our average ratio has only increased by point five to thirteen point four to one. Finally, as we compare ourselves to other districts across the state and within our region, MCCSC's bar is gold in this graph. You can see that MCCSC is an outlier when compared to both large and small districts. While the data reported on this graph represents the twenty-three, twenty-four school year for other schools, which is the most recent year the data is available on the DOE Gateway website, we know our own data heading into this school year, and that is reflected in the graph. The green line represents the quantity of certificated staff as compared to the number of students being served, which is the bars. As you can see, even after natural attrition, we remain above appropriate staffing levels based on our projected enrollment. Our goal is to bring alignment to our staffing levels based on our student enrollment. At this time, I'd like to hand it off to Mr. Matt Irwin, our Chief Financial Officer, for our second financial transparency report. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so like I said, this is our second financial transparency report. This is an opportunity just to educate everyone on kind of, uh, where we were, what we were looking at, uh, the progress that we've made and where we're headed. So, uh, we'll move into the next slide here. I want to start again with where, what we were, what we were looking at. So this was as of December two thousand twenty-four. Um, and if, orient yourself to the graph here, because some of the numbers can be hard to read. The numbers inside of the, uh, colored pieces of the bar, those are the individual fund balances for the respective funds, and, and what we're showing up there is the referendum fund, the operations fund, the education fund, and there's some one-time adjustments that are included in there. The numbers at the top of the bar, that's the sum of the, of the balances that are shown there in the bar. Um, again, noticing what we're looking at as you move into, into the following years, you get down into two thousand twenty-eight, and we're looking at over a thirty million dollar deficit. Um, and so you see our, our fund balances obviously trending in, in the wrong direction, um, at a, at a, at a high pace and quickly. Obviously, that necessitated some, some changes, and as we've embarked on this two-year strategy to achieve balance, in May, you were given, um, a snapshot of progress from, from John. Um, and so, again, what it shows is progress. So what this, what this, um, shows, this is through May, there's actuals through May in it, and it's, it reflects the natural attrition and the non-classroom cost savings that, um, were accounted for at that time. Similarly, as the last graph, inside of the bars, you're seeing the individual fund balances that are accounted for in there. And then at the top, you're seeing the sum of those fund balances at, um, to them. So, again, calling attention to that, you're seeing fund balances still going the wrong direction. You're seeing a much better picture than what you saw in the first graph, which is tremendous, that's progress. Uh, but by no means, um, job done. So going into the next, before we get into the next slide, I want to talk about what's changed since May. Yeah, you can go to that next slide. So what's changed since May? Because this, this is an ever-updating picture, right? We continue to, to update what, what we have in there. And so I wanted to take some time to talk a little bit to that, because it's important to understand what all is accounted for in this and what's not, so that the graph isn't deceiving to you. I think that's been one of the challenges that we talked about as, as this graph was put together, was trying to make sure that people were able to pull the key points from it that they should. So reflected in the numbers that you'll see in the next graph are actual revenue and expenses through July two thousand twenty-five. The process is at the end of every month, when we close out the month with our financials, we'll up, we continue to update these things. But those are, those are actuals reflected through July. The next thing is, is that we built in the latest legislative revenue model for, through FY twenty-seven. So this school year is FY twenty-six, next school year is FY twenty-seven. And if you look back historically at how the state has funded the per-student, the foundation and complexity, more so foundation, the average per-student increase that they've given is somewhere around two percent. Now, that's not always true every single year, but the average is about two percent. And so, again, to make an informed decision about where, where do we think we'll be in a, in a few years, we put a two percent increase on a per-student funding piece, which is built into that through, through the oncoming years. The other piece that's important right after that, and we continue to talk about this in the previous slides, is what we're experiencing nationally, locally, in the state with, with our, with our demographics and, and declining enrollment and, and just locally, to just less students to educate. So we've encompassed some of those assumptions. We try to pull as much information to this as we can um, to make sure that they're informed, uh, um, projections about where we're headed and what we've got going. And then also what we pulled in there is, Dr. Winston talked about the policy analytics report as it relates to the effects of SCA one on our funds. And so we, we even pulled some of that info, we pulled that information into these numbers as well about what we think the consequences of that bill will be on our funds. And then the last piece on this that is incredibly important is, so I've, I've talked about that we've got actuals through July. We built in the revenue into it. We talked about what we think that we'll have in student enrollment. But what I did to measure the effect of, of what our alignment of staffing has been to student enrollment is we flatlined expenses moving forward so that we can see what has been the effect just based on position control as it relates to the trajectory of these funds over time. And so if you go to the next, go to the next slide here, you, I want to, I want to talk about three key points when you look at this, because I don't want you to be deceived by what you see, is the balances in operations. Again, I, and I should probably orient you to the slide first is, again, just like the other ones, inside the bar, those are the respective fund balances. At the top, that's the sum of those fund balances. But in two thousand twenty-five, there's, again, there's a red part to that graph, and those are operation one-time funds. And we pulled that out separately because without that, there's just over, projected to be just over a million dollars in the operations fund. And if you were to pull that five million dollars off in the operations fund in the previous years, if we hadn't received those one-time funds, we would be barely above zero still. Um, the other fund balances, you see the referendum, two thousand twenty-two go up slightly, but then over time, it's trending in the wrong direction still. And that's concerning. Our education fund is flatlined, it's stable to a degree. But again, we haven't layered in future expenses. And as we all know, over time, things get more expensive in, in, in our regular life, and that's no different for a school corporation. But again, the purpose of what we're showing is that without accounting for future expenses, the changes that we've made are starting to stabilize. We're making progress, and that's great. We're only six months into a two-year, twenty-four month strategy. So that's, that's great that we're showing progress, but we haven't layered those in. So if we start to layer in expense increases, you guys can obviously see what would be happening to the fund balances over time. They would start to decrease. The other thing that's important is, is we talk about cash balances. In our own regular lives, we like to keep a certain amount of money hopefully in our bank accounts so that as we move from, from time to time, or something changes, because something always changes, or a new expense comes up that we didn't anticipate because, as we talked about, all these headwinds of changing things are going on, we need to have appropriate cash balances or optimal cash balances in place that allow us to weather the uncertainties and the changes that happen to us. And so that's the other piece that we need to take into account, that it's hard to reflect in a single graph. But what this graph does show is progress. And so I want to, I want to belabor a point a little bit more, because I want to talk about the one-time funds. I think that's important. So if you go to the next slide, and we talk about one-time funds, I think that it's important to note what are effective uses of one-time funds and what might be ineffective uses of one-time funds. And so, again, what we're doing is we're using them as safety nets right now to help us as we move towards balance. It keeps us from making, um, decisions more quickly than what we want to have to make them. And so it allows us to work, it gives us a longer runway to balance, and that's great. That's, that's, that's a benefit of them right now. And so the other piece of that is, how are some other ways that we do it? We get to balance and one-time funds come in, and we don't feel like our cash balances are in, in an optimal place. That can help buoy our cash balances to a place where we do feel like we have the right-sized safety net in place as we move from month to month and year to year to weather the uncertainties and the changes that come our way. And so that would be a great use of one-time funds. The other piece that's obviously more logical is that we would use it to account for one-time expenses. There's a need that comes up that isn't an ongoing obligation. We're able to knock that out with one-time funds that come in, that makes a lot of sense. An ineffective use would be the inverse of that, right? So we, we take one-time funds and we obligate that to something that's ongoing, then that's, that's obviously going to have the, the reverse of what we're trying to get, which is balance, right? We're trying to work towards balance as we continue to sustain excellence. And so that might be like, I really want a new vehicle. I get a tax return check of, of five thousand dollars, and I really wanted this vehicle, and I use that five thousand dollars and not knowing whether or not I'm going to have the, the monthly cash flow after that to make the payments, but in short sight and being eager because it's what I want, I do it. And then, you know, there's repercussions of that. And so, obviously, we don't want to put ourselves in that type of position, so we'll continue to be mindful of how we use one-time phone, funds. And I gave some examples of what those look like, uh, of, you know, I mentioned the EV bus rebate. That's a product of, of some of the energy efficiency projects that we, we've undertaken in the last couple of years. Also, the solar rebates, those are things that, again, are a part of some energy efficiency projects that the school corporation has partaken in that we're waiting when the government's going to disperse those. We continue to check up on those with Baker Tilly, who's helping us through that process. But we're not sure when those one-time funds might come in. Uh, we're told that we should expect them, but I don't have much of a great update for you on that. The other one is the taxable general obligation bonds. Those general obligation bonds, um, if approved by the board, those allow us to reimburse the operations fund for past capital expenditures that act as one-time funds that help buoy us and help us get to a place of balance. And so we're trying to, to use those one-time funds in a way that's going to serve the school corporation and, and, and the manner that it should, and, but be mindful of that and, and be responsible with that. So, uh, I want to talk a little bit about what's next. Um, again, we're six months in to a twenty-four month or two-year strategy. We've made a lot of progress in six months, but, you know, there's some other things that we'll continue to do. This is a continual process. And so we're going to continue to examine all costs and efficiencies across the board. And we talked about, uh, insurance as it relates to property casualty and workman's comp insurance. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on that insurance. And so it's important that we continue to make sure that we're getting the best value for the premium that we're paying and the coverages that we get. And we'll continue to look over that and make sure that that's appropriate. We'll continue to look at negotiable services, that could be trash services, that could be, uh, vendor pricing for things that we consume on an ongoing basis, like paper supplies or cleaning supplies, to make sure that we're getting the best price possible for those things to be more efficient with the dollars that we have. And then again, it's just continuing to establish appropriate staffing levels to meet student needs. They're driven based on student needs, and that's a continual conversation. Kids' needs change on a regular basis, month to month, year to year, and so we'll continue to have heartfelt conversations about what we need to do to meet the needs of kids. That's what we're here to do. And then we'll continue to do things to protect our operations fund and some of the declining revenue that we'll see in that as it relates to some of the effects of SCA one, and take advantage of some things that we can do to relieve pressure on the operations fund by funding certain types of projects. If we know that we have something that's costing us a lot of money and repair constantly, that we can take care of through a bond, that reduces some of the stress on the operation fund as we continue to work towards balance. So we're, we're navigating, we're looking across the board broadly to see what we can do, not just in staffing, but all of our expenses, say, and that takes time as we go through it. But we're, we're looking into making sure that we're getting the best value for what it is that we're providing to kids and maintaining that excellence in what we're doing. So I thought it was important to touch base on a couple of those other pieces aside from just a picture of where we projected to be with cash, because that's important to the long-term success and health of the organization. So with that, I'll pass it back to Dr. Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Very, very helpful, very informative.
Very, very helpful, very informative. So as we have, um, navigated the last several months, there are a number of questions that repeatedly and consistently come up. And we thought it'd be helpful as we close out our presentation to ask those questions and answer those questions and provide information to our community. The first question is, can referendum funding help? Well, the fact of the matter is that our referendum funding is helping. Um, we have two currently. It represents approximately eighteen percent of our overall operating budget for twenty twenty five. And it does support a portion of the wages and benefits that we incur on a, on a regular and consistent basis to pay for our staff, primarily our teachers and our support staff that support instruction. Mr. Irwin, can you also provide some additional information regarding how our referendum funding are helping us?
Yeah, I think it's important to note, they're being used for the intended purposes, right? We put out that referendum report not too long ago. They got mailed out to all of our constituents. But I think one of the things that's important to note is the referendums are gonna have their own challenges because of SCA one. SCA one is gonna continue to artificially drive down AV. Our referendums can only produce a certain rate. And so what SCA one does is it undermines what the voters approved as far as what they wanted to support. They will produce less dollars for us to support the ongoing needs that we have and the obligations we've made because of their driving down AV. If AV goes down and you apply the same tax rate to it, it's going to produce, produce less dollars. And that's one of the, the, the concerns and the challenges that we've got to navigate is that our referendum funds over time will not continue to produce the dollars that we expected when we went out to the voters and asked for them. They're gonna receive declining revenue because of the effects of SCA one over the coming years. Um, as, as AV comes in and goes down, so will the funding that will come into the referendum funds. We'll continue to use them for their voter-approved processes and we'll make sure that we do our best to have efficiency in those dollars as well. But that is a challenge that those funds will, will have.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. And we will continue to provide updates on how we are utilizing the referendum dollars that we've been entrusted with. The next question is a frequent question as well. How can MCCSC afford construction projects? And I'm gonna turn back to, uh, our CFO, Mr. Irwin, and have him speak on that one as well.
Yeah, so our, our, our certain funds have designated purposes. There, there's a lot of guardrails in place through the state and state board of accounts as far as what we can spend a dollar on and from where. And so our debt service fund is one that allows us to go out and, and bond for, uh, dollars that fund construction projects. Those bond dollars cannot be used to pay for staffing, pay and benefits. So we can't just move the funds from that over to the education fund and spend it how we wanna spend it. That's not how that works. So it's, it's got designated purposes. And again, you've got a nice picture out here for the ribbon. We had just done the ribbon cutting right on that, uh, the other, last night. Uh, where that's an example of the bonds or the projects that we're able to do through our debt service fund, which repays, it's like the payments on that, on that debt that we're able to take out. It allows us to do things around the school corporation that provide the facilities that our community and parents expect and they deserve. And so that's a big part of our learning environment is making sure that we make sure that our facilities are top-notch. And so our debt service fund is one of the funds that helps support that piece of the pie, but it can't just be moved however we like it.
Thank you. We really wanted to emphasize that particular question because it comes up repeatedly and it seems to be the source of a lot of misunderstanding and confusion. So thank you, Mr. Irwin. The next question that we wanted to make sure to take a little bit of time to talk about is whether or not other school corporations in Indiana are facing some of these same challenges. One of the questions that we hear repeatedly is, it seems like it's just an MCCSC thing. And the, the fact of the matter is, it's not just an MCCSC thing. You sho, you've seen some of the headlines, the ones that we shared tonight, but you've also seen other headlines. There are just as many headlines as I shared, there are probably five times that many that we didn't share this evening. Most Indiana public school corporations are also experiencing declining enrollment and they are also experiencing declining revenue, um, as a result of legislative decisions that have been made. What we know is that about seventy-five, roughly seventy-five percent of Indiana school corporations have reported that they have a decline in their enrollment. In addition, we know that about ninety-five percent of all public schools are gonna receive fewer dollars than they expected to receive simply as a result of the, uh, the adverse impacts of SCA one on public education. At the end of the day, there are numerous headwinds that we are facing. There are the state-level headwinds, the unknown federal impacts that, that haven't fully hit us yet, but we certainly had to pause this summer when we didn't know whether or not we were going to receive some of the dollars, which then directly impacted our ability to hire staff and to begin providing services at the opening of school in a couple of, of key areas. And that was very frustrating, um, to our families and it was certainly disappointing to us. Um, we appreciated the fact that those dollars were eventually unfrozen, but it had an immediate impact on us and every school district across the country. SCA one, we are gonna have some sessions in upcoming weeks and months that speak much more explicitly about exactly how much money is SCA one going to cost our school corporation. And I think you're gonna be floored when you, when you hear more about what that looks like. And then just locally, some of the demographic changes. So in closing, I really want to remind you of the four key takeaways from tonight's quarterly update. One, the combination of local population declines, state and federal financial impacts have all had a significantly decreased current and future revenue for our corporation. We are facing very, very strong headwinds, headwinds like we've not experienced before. And yet, in spite of all of that, I remain confident in our ability to navigate them as long as we stay the course. We are making steady progress, but our work is not complete. The ever-changing goalposts make it difficult, but not impossible. Our executive team will continue to take a measured and deliberate approach as we address these highly complex and complicated challenges. We're gonna need to remain nimble and flexible as we continue to adjust to the known and the unknown, uh, impacts that threaten our future financial, our fu, our finan, our financial future. I just wanna say thank you to the board for allowing us to provide this quarterly update. My team and I are open to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, Dr. Winston, Dr. Henderson and Mr. Irwin. Are there any comments from the board?
I have one. Um, one of the things you mentioned as one of the challenges we're facing, Dr. Winston, is the effects of immigration policy on enrollment. I have some personal opinions on that, but if you could expand on that a little bit and how that is affecting our enrollment.
Well, thank you for that question. We certainly are monitoring our enrollment numbers and we have recognized since February, um, that there have been, there have been changes, uh, in attendance. We've recognized that members of our community are uncertain about, um, their safety and, um, and it has impacted our ability to have our students feel comfortable and safe in our schools. We do anticipate that that's going to impact our overall enrollment numbers and quite frankly, enrollment across the state and across the country. And so while I can't sit here this evening and give you exact numbers, it is something of, of great concern to all of us. And we wanna make sure that our families, uh, of immigrant status know that we remain welcome and supportive and, and inclusive and that we are ready to stand and support them in any way we possibly can. But it is going to impact and we, we anticipate and are already seeing some early impacts.
Are we seeing any change? Are we seeing a reduced number of children of international students through the university who are coming in now?
That's a great question. I, I might turn to, uh, Mrs. Harmon because I know the EL program is under her oversight, but we're still in the early stages of, of monitoring enrollment.
Yeah, I think I would say we're, something we're curious and we're looking at, but we, we don't, we couldn't say definitively whether we see that happening, especially since IU is just picking up now and often that enrollment happens right in this, this week.
A little delayed from.
So exactly, so we, we couldn't say yet.
Okay.
And we do have some families who may not return to school until after Labor Day. And so the next couple of weeks may be important for us to, to, to monitor as well. So we are monitoring attendance on a very daily basis. Thank you for those questions. Those are, those are really significant for us.
I have, I have one. Um, I am curious, um, if you could share with us and share with the public how the school corporation is in talks with our local government entities about SCA one and its fiscal impacts, particularly when it comes to how we're going to see taxes impacted. Um, it's my understanding next year won't look quite as bad. I think that's by design. But as we get into twenty twenty seven beyond, that's where we're going to really see the big shifts happening where homeowners aren't necessarily gonna save like they thought and our businesses might get a bigger hit. So I'm just curious how, um, everybody's kind of working together through this very, um, unknown time.
That's a most excellent question. Um, what I would say is that a few months, everybody's still trying to figure it out. We're still in the early stages of working with policy analytics to figure out how many millions of dollars are we not going to, to receive over the next several years. And I would say that our, our, our partners, um, at the government level are also doing the same. Mayor Thompson hosted an event a few months ago with some preliminary conversations with officials, um, who are being impacted in this regard. And so we think that that was very beneficial just to kinda open people's eyes. I know that I've also been in conversation with our local library, uh, leadership, certainly talking with our chamber about how we might move forward in having some more of those kinds of forums because we are all on the same page. Now, the advantages that the city has that we certainly don't have is local income taxes. That's not an op, uh, an option that, that's available to us. But the collaboration and the communication is absolutely essential, um, in so many ways. And I do feel, uh, the sensitivity from our governmental partners in recognizing the impact that this is having on the schools. And so we will continue to have ongoing communication and collaboration.
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you, Mr. Irwin, for so clearly delineating how funds can be spent. Um, in particular, when you mentioned about the, uh, soccer field, for example. You know, you hear comments, oh, so-and-so just got a new playground, but yet we can't do this or that with our money. And I think it's important for everyday folks to know just exactly how that money has to be spent. I mean, I, I can share that frustration like when I hear the university that I work for is spending millions on a football stadium expansion, but my retirement savings were cut by one percent. So, you know, I, I understand people's frustration, but I, I think it's good for everyone to know the reason why, um, some things are able to be done and other things aren't. Um, Ashley, I think you brought up a really good point. You were talking about other local orgs and it made me kind of think about how I read that across the board, state fun, fuck the, excuse me, state organizations that receive funding have all been cut by like five percent. For example, the Indiana School for the Death lost a, yeah, lost a bunch of funding. I think they had to lay off around a dozen employees. And locally, even here, we see our library having to cut their hours, which is really sad and it's really a shame. But it's kind of, you have to do these things in response to this legislation. Um, and, uh, I, I think that I appreciate, um, all of the graphics because I really think it also hits home how some of this, a lot, well, I say some, a lot of these things are out of our control. We, we don't do anything about birth rates. It's, um, so it's not a question of funds being mismanaged. It's a question that there are just fewer children than there were. You know, when my kids first started attending, um, public school, you know, when they turned five in twenty twelve. So, and, and then COVID really did a lot to the numbers of enrollment across the country. So I think it's important again for people to realize that it's not something that, that you or your team did. Um, it's, but we have to respond to it, right? Because you can't just keep going like if you're balancing your own budget, you can't spend money that you don't have. And sorry, I'm usually a fan of brevity, but I just have a few more things I wanna say because I know people, like, nobody likes long meetings. But, um, just to kinda go back to what you were saying about having to make funding adjustments. I, I know there's still a few teachers here in the room, so I just wanna say, I, I am your ally. I really understand the difficulty when you have to maybe pivot and get moved into positions that you wouldn't have chosen, right? I'm an educator. Prior to working in higher ed, I was a registered nurse, which there's a lot of similarities because you're serving the public, you're doing the greater good. And you have, um, ratios. Ratios in staffing are always those difficult things to hear. But, you know, I can't think of any, um, organization, whether it's for-profit, not-for-profit, where you could survive without making those kinds of changes. Like when I used to work as a staff nurse, if we were overstaffed, um, either I would have to not, I would have to stay home and not get paid for the day or I would have to float. And I didn't like doing that. So I certainly can relate to what you're going through and really, I mean, I'm sure this was not an easy decision for, um, the administration to have to move people around. So I appreciate your flexibility. I'm so grateful for everything you do. I've got three kids, um, one who has finally graduated from MCCSC, but I have two kids presently enrolled and I know you do amazing work. And none of us would be here without having teachers in our lives. So again, thank you for all you do. Um, I think that's it for now.
Can I piggyback really quickly off of what you were mentioning about the libraries now going, the library is going to have to close earlier? Um, and a concern for internet access, particularly for our rural students. Um, when that closes earlier, it means that they have less access because we still don't have internet in all of our rural areas. Um, so I just, I, I wanna just put that out there that we do have students, um, that can't get that or, um, even live within side-city limits that households can't afford that access and they require and need the library for that access. Um, I know that that's a very recent decision and I don't expect that there's an answer to this. But is there, is that a talk that's happening within, um, the corporation on how we're going to help that access that, uh, might be limited on our shoestring budget?
So next month at our board meeting, Mr. Cope is gonna be talking about what we're doing in the area of technology. And we do, uh, continue to provide different levels of support around internet access. And I don't know, Mr. Cope, is there anything you'd wanna share at this moment in time? Or do you want us to keep us in, uh, in suspense and, and wait for your presentation in September? Can you come to one somebody's microphone? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I, I will add that we've, um, put in a, a grant, uh, proposal to the city, um, for a digital opportunity to try to, uh, bridge the gap for, um, students that do need, um, internet, um, at home and, and don't already have it.
Thank you. That's a very real issue. I appreciate, you know, those comments as well, so thank you.
Isn't there, and correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't one of the major providers offer something? I don't know who for, some free internet where needed and are we advertising that?
Yes, Mr. Cope?
They, they, but that is actually, um, going away. Um, so we're, we're looking to, you know, continue to, to bridge the, that do, that do arise.
Okay.
Can I, do you start to say something?
Well, I started, oh, go ahead, Asia, go, Asia.
Okay, Anne, I'm gonna talk loud. Um, I just wanna say that coming into this, it, it has been very chaotic. But I wanna, um, just say how much I appreciate all of you, the administrative team, Dr. Winston, because of the transparency that we are currently experiencing. Um, it's very easy to understand and, and I think that the information is out there for everybody. Um, a, a, a budget that is like uncertain and like to have a budget that is almost like a living document, um, that's very difficult. And I'm just been very impressed with the amount of, um, care and concern that's been put into every. the amount of um care and concern that's been put into every situation. I mean, every decision that's being made is being made very delicately and as it's been expressed um in a in a true sense of excellence as the goal. And and I can't say that I could be prouder to be a part of this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And we do, we don't take any of these decisions lightly, but we appreciate your acknowledgement.
Well, um, yeah, well, as you said such, you said things so eloquently. You repeated what I was going to say, but a question I had, and actually, Matt, you answered it very well, because I was going to ask the question about the bonds, and if we were selling bonds, how that money could actually help us with salary and wages. And you're like, nope, they can't. Um, but that's still a learning curve. But I do appreciate all the work that teachers have done, um even in pivoting, because I look at how you're going from school to school, still educating our students. And I know we're going to have a another report from um Mrs. Harmon back here that I'll have something else to say about that, but I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, and I I'd like to just take a moment just to acknowledge our teachers. They have been troopers. They have worked so hard. They, none of us like the decisions that we've been forced to make because of what's happening at the state and federal level. But our teachers have done what teachers do day in and day out. They rise to the occasion. They serve children, they serve them exceedingly well, and we are so appreciative. We we appreciate the effort, we appreciate the commitment. We appreciate the flexibility and the willingness to do whatever's necessary. It's almost like by all means necessary, we're going to get our babies educated. And we do want a different reality for our educators. And and we are hopeful and optimistic that that might come in the future, um and that our teachers will will stand by us as we navigate these difficult waters right now. But I want our teachers to know that I and my whole team are deeply appreciative of what you do each and every day. So, thank you.
Um, I had come prepared to ask a question about the whole child, um what we were still doing to focus on the whole child, even um as we have prioritized academic success. But I I think that actually Dr. Henderson's presentation covered a lot of my questions. Um, and I don't know if this is exactly what Matt said, but I'm going to say we have the best child nutrition program in the state. Uh, so that was really reassuring to hear. Um, and I'm happy to see that we're still tracking things like caseload per nurses, per school nurses. I also really want to thank our community partners for health services. Um, I know that we got an email, as a parent today, I got an email that um talked about all of the different health services that are being provided. And a lot of those were through community partners, for dental and eye care, and even the vaccination clinics that our health clinic, that our health department runs in the schools. And I feel really grateful to be a part of a community that partners with us to provide those services. Also, um in light of Mrs. Helm's presentation tonight, I am reminded of how grateful I am that we have a community that supports our teachers' innovation. We've mentioned several times how fortunate we are to have the referendum support from our community. Um, I I do have a some questions, but I think I first want to say something about this idea of choice um in light of um in light of the changes that they're making at the federal and state government. And that they often refer to these things as ways of increasing choice. And um I have to be honest that it doesn't feel to me as though these things are increasing our choices. Um, we know, even with our declined enrollment, we serve almost ten thousand children um whose families have chosen public education. And the state is making it, and the federal government are making it increasingly difficult for us to provide the kind of public education that those of us who've chosen it are looking for. Um, and to be part of a community that appreciates public education. Again, I feel so fortunate to be a part of a community that does value public education and to be constantly seeing the barriers that the state puts up to that um is frustrating, to put it to put it lightly. Um, and again, my focus is often health. Uh, I think that this is true, I was sharing with Dr. Winston, that in light of the changes that the state has made regarding um school attendance, I feel as a parent that even my my um autonomy to decide when my child is sick enough to stay home from school has been diminished. I I uh there are just, I could go on and on about the ways in which I feel that my choices as a parent and as a community representative have been diminished. And I really reject the notion that these things are in the service of choice.
I think it's just making more difficult choices for everyone to make, but yeah, I mean, I think you're 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 absolutely right. And
No, I'm 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 welcoming, yeah, I should pause. I have, I'm going to go, I have lots of things to say.
Well, while I forgot the mic for a minute, again, I was, because I forgot to say this earlier in my remarks, but I was really pleased to hear about um the reduction caseloads for registered nurses as well, because that was one of the things that I was concerned with when I was running for school board. Because I used to work in the health office. And at that time, we were nowhere near um the recommended ratios that like healthy people twenty twenty, twenty thirty had put forth. And I don't even know if anyone in um the federal government cares about, well, yeah, if they even care about healthy people twenty thirty anymore. But I'm glad to hear that those changes are being made. Um, and again, special shout out to Matt Tomrell, because yeah, like, I I think people don't understand, and so I was really happy to hear about the award that they won. I think people don't understand how great our nutrition department is. A few years ago, and I probably told a lot of you this, but a few years ago, he came to talk to one of my classes about the social determinants of health, so he was coming to talk about nutrition. And I think the students thought it was going to be boring, and he broke down every stereotype about school lunch and taught them so much. And they learned so much about, um, oh, gosh, now I can't remember the C. What is it where you, everybody gets free lunch if you live in a certain area? And the criteria for what you have to put in the food and for it to meet, you know, be healthy. And even my own kids like compliment how great the food is now. So I think that is an accomplishment in itself. But um I think that we have really great people um in this district. We're living in like the weirdest timeline ever. I was thinking about this earlier when I was thinking about coming to this meeting, like, I'm going to reveal something embarrassing about myself, but when I was an undergraduate, I would come home from work at the Bracken Library and I would turn at at Ball State, and I would turn on um Thursday Night Raw because WWF, because I, like, my guilty pleasure was Dwayne The Rock Johnson. And this was like at the turn of the millennium. And and so you're watching it, it's basically like a soap opera with muscles. And to think that the family that owns that, like, the woman is in charge of the Department of Education is like, what on earth is happening? And I know we have folks at the state level that are clearly out of their depth, and we have a governor that is telling teachers to do more with less. And those are big words coming from someone who took like eleven helicopter rides from Indianapolis to Jasper. But the thing, and and so it seems like there's a lot of gloom and doom, and things seem really bleak right now. But the one thing that I feel good about is the leadership that we have here. And so as difficult as things seem, I feel like we're all going to get through it together, because I know you have such a great team, Dr. Winston, and I know the the people on the board are doing this because they care about public education. They didn't specifically run for school board because they wanted to dismantle it or, you know, ban every book or whatever. So I feel like, um, I do feel hope. And that's saying a lot right now. So, um, I just want to say again that uh in spite of everything that we've heard, you and Mr. Irwin and Dr. Henderson and Mrs. Harmon and Lisa and everybody involved, I just, I feel like I'm at the Golden Globes thanking everybody, but really, I do feel like there are things that I can like makes me sleep at night a little bit better. So, thank you. I know you have a really difficult job, but I I think, as I come to the end of my first term on the board, I think one of the things I'm proudest of is having a part in having, you know, putting you in the seat where you are, because you are doing such good things for our kids. Or as a parent and as a taxpayer, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, board member Wyatt. I appreciate that greatly. And and on behalf of our team, they thank you as well. We we work hard at this, and we can't do what we do without the support of this board. We really cannot. And so just knowing that you all are beside us, behind us, shielding us in the front as well, it it really does matter much more than than you probably realize. Thanks to all of you. And we will have another update in November.
I have questions about transportation and after-school care and before and after-school care, but they might be covered in Ms. Harmon's presentation. Are those things that you're going to touch on?
No.
Um, well, I know that at the beginning of the school year, we had some challenges um with the with extended day. And I know that um Ms. Noble Cuchara mentioned that um this has been kind of an ongoing, it it the access to that program has been a challenge in our district for a while. Um, are we currently able to meet the demand for extended day? Or what, is there an update on that since the beginning of the school year?
I'll invite um Dr. Dowling to come to the to the microphone and kind of speak on that, because he oversees our before care and after care program, and he has the most up-to-date, minute-by-minute uh information.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Winston. So the um, one of the things that Dr. Winston talked about tonight was um some federal funds. And specifically, the Twenty First Century Grant, which supports our extended day program, was frozen by the federal government. So that caused us some time to have to see if we were going to access those funds. That's what we use to pay, use for our scholarships to attend um our children who attend extended day for free. Um, so that that caused us some delay. But I will say we are in a great position now as of yesterday, uh August twenty fifth. All families who had it um completed the enrollment process were able to start extended day yesterday, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dowling.
And Dr. Dowling has worked very hard and tirelessly with him and his team to to make sure that we can get information out as quickly as as possible. Um, with the unexpected delays, that did cause a a lot of heartache and frustration on our part. But to his credit and to the credit of his team, they continue to work very diligently. We do apologize uh to our families, but we do place the responsibility of that at the federal government and the delay in releasing those dollars to allow us to support our families.
This is substantial grant. It's a substantial amount of money that we need to know whether we're going to receive or not. Thank you, Dr. Winston. I agree. I appreciate the community's patience and understanding. We want to do everything we can to best serve children. It just it made it harder this year, but we will always continue to do our best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dowling. And I I would just echo what others have said that, um, you know, even in light of the challenges that keep being put before you, um I think that the leadership on has done an amazing job at addressing those and making sure um that we're minimizing the impact that our students and our families feel from these things. Um, I think my last, my last questions, uh I feel a little bit like the ghost of Christmas past. I think I might be uh in this room anyway, the longest-serving board member oddly. Um, and so I I I sort of haven't forgotten about the equity-centered strategic plan that we focused on for the first three years of my time on the board. And um I still, I know that we were focused on things like reducing discipline disparities and even disparities in achievement, which is still part of our of our priority focus. And um I wonder if we're still tracking any of those things and um still working towards strategies to address those things.
In short, the answer is yes. We continue to want to make sure that every child, regardless of their zip code, their background, their ethnicity, their gender, we are moving mountains to make sure that they achieve at high levels. And so that's never going to go away.
I suspected as much. Um, I I I think also is as part of that, we were focused on um on improving our transportation infrastructure and making sure that um all kids had access to free transportation to school, um with hopefully not uh not too tedious of of a ride time. Um, and and certainly after the pandemic, we were getting regular updates on transportation, as that was one of our biggest struggles. Um, is there, how are things going with transportation now, I guess, is my general question.
I'll I'll certainly um defer to to Dr. Henderson to give a brief update on that.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Winston. Um, I would report that over the course of the summer, we continually review the routing of our buses to ensure that it's efficient and that we're reducing ride time for students wherever possible. At the beginning of every school year, when we redo routes, parents have the opportunity to indicate whether or not they intend to use a bus. And part of the issue that we have at the beginning of every school year is we have individuals who will indicate that they intend to use a bus, so a route is developed in anticipation of that student using a bus. And what ends up happening is the individual student doesn't use the bus on a regular basis. And so we have to then monitor those routes for efficiency. The opposite also occurs at times where individuals won't indicate that they need a bus, and yet they do. Or new families move into a neighborhood, and so additional students then get added to a route. So when that happens, that can change the ride time for students within that route as students are added or subtracted from routes. So we're constantly at the beginning of the year analyzing on-time arrival of buses, both for pickup and drop-off um at school. And we're making modifications to those routes, sometimes combining routes, sometimes separating routes, sometimes adding routes. Um, we constantly monitor the time in which buses arrive and when they're finished dropping students off in the morning. And we monitor the times that they are arriving to pick students up at the end of the day and the time that those routes finish at the end of the day. And the Transportation Department, um Director Scott Waddell and and Assistant Director Jacob, drawing a blank right now, Carmichael, thank you, uh Jacob Carmichael and their team are constantly monitoring all of those statistics and making modifications. So, some of the frustrations that can occur at the beginning of the year where uh the bus pickup time might vary for a few minutes um in the first couple of weeks or three weeks of school really are a result of adding and subtracting students from routes, combining routes, trying to make sure that they're the most efficient that they possibly can be. Um, those should settle a little bit once our uh IU parents arrive and their children start attending. Um, so there'll still be a little bit of fluctuation. We feel like we're in a really good position right now in terms of those drop-off and pickup times. And the goal is certainly to minimize ride time and to ensure that students arrive at school on time, so we don't lose instructional minutes. And that buses arrive to pick up at the end of the day to take students home in time, so that our staff who monitor buses don't have to stay late.
And I'll just add one additional comment um to Dr. Henderson's credit and and to his entire team. I can count every day on getting at least two text messages. One message lets me know that our buses safely arrived at our schools and picked up our children. And at the end of the day, that all of our children have been safely transported home. And so I I do get transportation updates on a daily basis from Dr. Henderson and his team. And I know he's all in more of the details, but the it's continues to be a high priority for us. It's my reason for even sharing that that minute detail with you. But that's the level of specificity of how we are monitoring and keeping on top of what's happening with transportation. And we will be providing um updates to the board every other year, based upon our three-year plan.
Thank you so much.
I I can speak as someone who has routes that have been optimized um from the previous year, that um so far, without, I think, exception to the construction that was happening outside of North, our buses been, buses have been on time for drop-off and pickup every single day, which I don't know has ever happened for us since we've been using buses. Uh, so just want to give you a shout out for that. I know we're just, you know, a couple of routes, but um having the bus not weave through the neighborhood so much to pick up kids while it's a little bit longer for us to get to the stop has really helped, I think, improve the time overall for us. So we've we've seen a a good improvement um from that. So shout out to you all.
And the app has been working for us, too.
Well, I still have one kid's bus that doesn't show up, so we'll we'll leave that one go, but the other. But I'm okay with that, because I I know I can, I know it's consistent, so.
I would concur. I wasn't sure if my experience-
I wasn't sure if my experience was was typical, but absolutely, this year has been the transportation has been reliable. We're we're one for two on the app, but that's fine.
Yeah, we're one for two.
Uh, that's uh, it still is reliable from my perspective. So yeah, it's been great. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for your questions and and thank you for your feedback. Very helpful.
Thank you, Dr. Winston, Dr. Henderson, Mr. Irwin, and others who chimed in along the way. Our next presentation is back to school update and student learning overview. Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Vice President Cooperman, Dr. Winston, and members of the board. I'm thrilled to be able to present to you on back to school. And I I think it's a little bit more exciting and celebratory maybe than than other things. So I will start with our opening day, which was on August fourth, twenty twenty five. And this is when all of our teachers, we get to welcome them back. Bloomington High School South was our host this year. And we literally, and we this is one of our favorite things, we roll out the red carpet. And you can see we we stand and greet them as they come in. And it's really the day is about building momentum, connection, excitement for the work we do together. We celebrate the past year's successes and we kind of set our vision and goals for the year ahead. So this year, as we gather together, we focus on our theme of, you know, together we we were building on this idea last year, Team MCCSE. Board Member Prani's wearing our shirt to demonstrate that theme. Yep.
We did that on purpose.
So and this together we really kind of thinks about the idea of collective teacher collective efficacy. There's been a lot of research done about this. And it's that shared belief among a group of teachers that through their combined efforts, they can positively influence student learning and achieve student outcomes, measurable ones, right? It has a significant impact. And so we asked teachers to reflect on that concept of together we what can we accomplish? But also earlier in the summer, when we gathered with our principals, we had them as well. The word cloud on the right kind of represents their thoughts. But then also on that day, they literally paraded across the stage with their statements about what they feel like they their schools can accomplish and the notion of together we. And then, of course, two days later, on August sixth, we welcomed all of our students back, approximately ten thousand students in K through twelve in our twenty three schools. In addition, three hundred and eighty four students in our pre K and preschool student students in our program. So we're really excited about the expansions there. And our first class of MCCSE online, which is approximately fifty students. I want to highlight tonight in the theme of sustaining excellence, and Dr. Winston mentioned that I would be kind of expanding on this. I want to focus on academic opportunities, academic readiness and achievement, and academic support and advancement. So first, just to highlight the opportunities that our schools provide for students and families. This slide is kind of an overview, and I'm going to do a dive into each of these areas that you see presented here. But I still think it doesn't capture quite all of the opportunities that our schools and staff provide. We do have five STEM certified schools, three elementary schools, Grandview, Lakeview, Unionville, a high school, the Academy, and Bachelor Middle School. This is a rigorous process certified through the Indiana Department of Education. And so it's a significant significant effort to do and commitment to STEM when a school becomes a STEM certified school through the IDOE. But beyond that, it's something that is important to our corporation, and we have corporation wide programming. You probably have seen our STEM to them mobile lab as it goes around town and it visits every single elementary school and provides STEM experiences for students as well as support for teachers for embedding STEM in the classroom. We have fab labs and maker spaces. Each one of our middle school has a fab lab. And we have computer science curriculum throughout the K twelve space with specific computer science classes in the second in the secondary spaces. We have robotics teams throughout and Project Lead the Way, which is a curriculum that supports STEM in in the classroom. Additionally, we have three international baccalaureate world schools. Those focus on inquiry, knowledge, and care through intercultural understanding and respect. Those are Child's Templeton and University. We also, as many of you might be aware, have a dual language immersion program. Starts in elementary school at Summit, and students can then are attending Bachelor. And this is the first year the program started a number of years ago that the students have now. We have our first class of freshmen at Bloomington High School South in the dual language immersion program. We have our Career Center, Hoosier Hills. And through our Career Center and also the offerings at our high schools, we have twenty six career and college pathways. Some of those are they're all listed here. Some of those are entirely at the Career Center, some are entirely at the high school, and most many of them are a combination between courses offered in both the Career Center and the high school itself. And thinking about how we prepare students for college and career as well, we are looking there we go. Sorry, it was like there was a delay, and now I've messed it up. There we go. Three of our high schools offer the Indiana College Core. These are thirty transferable credit hours of college credit that they can take to any public Indiana post secondary institution, kind of their general education core that they've completed. What are the Academy of Science and Entrepreneurship is a certified early college high school. That's a certification through the Center of Excellence Leadership of Learning, the University of Indianapolis. Again, another rigorous pro- process. And it also is really focused on ensuring students who do not traditionally have access to college and providing them with the supports and experiences to make that happen. Our high schools across our high schools, we have thirty four AP courses and over forty one dual credit courses. We monitor that FAFSA completion, and we're above state average on that. And again, it's an indicator that we are talking to students about what life after high school looks like preparing them for that FAFSA they can take with them to complete a workplace certificate, to go to a four year institution or a two year institution. So it's important. Arts programming is essential to hear in MCCSE in our community. So just highlighting this list doesn't cover all of it, but highlighting a few things. We have music and fine art classes K through twelve. We have an elementary strings and band program for early exposure to that. Our students are going to the MAC, they're hearing the opera, they're going to the art museum and being immersed in those experiences. We offer metalworking, stained glass, jewelry, ceramics. And again, those these are just a highlight of some of the things that we have. Of course, thank you so much to our community. We have a referendum funded funded early learning expansion. All of our schools have early learning programs in them. Last year, we expanded our four year old pre K program and had a hundred and four percent increase in pre K students in our schools. This year is our three year old preschool expansion. And as of the end of July, we had a hundred and twenty students in our pre K or preschool programming. And over the summer, pre incoming pre K students, so they're now currently pre K students, attended Adventure Camp for the very first time. So it was a great opportunity to be able to expand that as well. And that's our summer programming. So then we're also want to be looking at what is the academic readiness and achievement that we have in our schools? And so again, looking at that pre K program, we're really talking about getting kids ready for kindergarten. We have a play based curriculum called Creative Curriculum, and it's building those developmental foundational skills and helping prepare them. Last year, our pre K students, when they started, we use a tool called iSprout to kind of evaluate for kindergarten readiness. Nineteen percent of them were ready by the end in the spring, when that same tool was used, eighty three percent of them were kindergarten ready, which is really exciting. I read. We're thrilled about the I read results that were released a little bit ago. This is Measures Foundational Reading Skills Based on Indiana Academic Standards. It's a test for third graders. We saw a three point seven percent increase in our third grade pass rate, which is great. Three of our schools had a hundred percent pass rate. We haven't had in three schools in the time that we've been monitoring I read. And forty seven percent of those third graders, and they're now fourth graders this current year, actually passed when they were second graders early in spring of twenty four. So they passed early. They hit that mark as second graders. And then last spring, when we gave this test, so the fifty percent of those second graders, so our current third graders in our schools, passed early I read. So that's phenomenal. This spring, when third graders take I read, these fifty percent won't have to take it because they've they've already accomplished that. So really, this is foundational and essential. And so we're really pleased to see these results of the hard work that our teachers and our schools are putting into this. When we look at I learn, this is state accountability, grades three through eight in all of those. We are above state average in that proficiency. We're five point three percent higher in English Language Arts, eight point one percent higher in math. If we combine those, when we look at state results, we're seven point six higher as well. Then when we look at the high school accountability as related to SAT, all eleventh graders now take the SAT as part of accountability. We're among the highest in the state here, really proud of the work that our high schools do. When we look at all Indiana school districts, and that's three hundred and sixty two that participate in the SAT, we're twenty first, which is pretty good. But when we even narrow that farther by schools that are similarly sized, we're third out of twenty three similarly sized schools. So congratulations to our high schools and the hard work that they're doing as well. Ninth grade, uh, thinking about graduation, we monitor something called ninth grade on track. And this is looking at students in ninth grade, are they passing all of their core courses, so English, math, social studies, science? And then are they do they have ten, at least ten credits or more going into their sophomore year? Because that's an indicator that, yep, they'll be ready to they'll graduate in four years. Ninety four percent of them are on track. Of course, then, the six percent, it allows us, right? We've flagged, we've identified, it allows us an opportunity to intervene and put additional supports in as well. Our graduation itself is three point four or five percent higher from twenty three to twenty four. The twenty five graduation rate is not released yet because students still between summer school and some early fall experiences, they still have the ability to graduate over these next few weeks, and that will be released here in the fall in a couple in about a month. But you can see our current graduation rate is ninety five point six five percent, a little over five percent higher than the state. And if we compare ourselves to Indiana charter schools who are passing who are have a graduation rate of fifty eight point six. So then we think about what are the pieces that we have in place to kind of give these opportunities and achieve at the levels that we see ourselves achieving? I want to focus on our guiding principle for a minute and re emphasize some of the comments that Dr. Winston made earlier, that we commit to treating all members of our school community with dignity and respect. We value our schools as welcoming spaces for all families dedicated to meet the needs of every student, and that underpins everything that we do and is our important principle. When we think about academic support and advancement, we kind of consider how we're approaching instruction. We look at, of course, we're guided by our Indiana academic standards in terms of what students should know. Then we're going to look at that state data and see, okay, how are we doing for our students in terms of proficiency and accountability? We're looking even closer with some local corporation data to monitor trends, inform our curriculum, and identify the supports that we needed. For instance, that ninety four percent on track, right? That lets us know we need some supports for these six percent. How are we going to do that? And then our buildings have even more localized data to their building so that they can inform daily instruction, right? Teachers are doing classroom assessments. There might be common formative assessments that groups of teachers are looking at together. They can make instructional decisions, intervene when students need more intervention, and put those things in place. And that's how we see a roadmap towards accelerating student growth and achievement. In doing that, we commit to our teaching and learning expectations that are focused on instructional design and delivery, our our adopted curriculum, what our classroom environment looks like, that we're using data to drive the decisions that we're making and feedback on that. Integration of technology that enhances the classroom experience. And then I mentioned early, focus on collective teacher advocacy as well. A little bit just focus on two foundational areas, math and English Language Arts as well. So we have a systematic alignment of math instruction to kind of emphasis on clarity, coherence, and conceptual understanding. And we have just implementing this year a K through twelve math curriculum. And then our English Li- Language Arts as well, a system wide approach to that foundational skills and how we're intervening as well when students need additional support. We have reading plans at every school K through eight to import goals and are aligned to the science of reading research. And we're currently just starting our adoption or the process to adopt a knowledge building ELA curriculum for the twenty six, twenty seven school year. The final thing I want to talk about is our multi tiered system of support. I mentioned early how we intervene when we identify that students need more support. We also are thinking, but we're thinking about it in a tiered way. Tier one, everything that all students need for their experience, strategic support at tier two, and intensive support at tier tier three. We're thinking about that academically, behaviorally, and socially emotionally. We use tools to screen, to progress monitor, to make data, inform decisions, and use instruction that is evidence based to improve outcomes. We really have ten thousand reasons to be the best that we can be every day, and these are a little bit of the ways that we do it. Thank you so much. I was excited to share this with you.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. Do we have questions or comments for Ms. Harmon from the board?
It's nice to see the good news.
Thank you.
And there's a lot of it.
It is. Yeah, and and good news by the numbers. That's it confirms, I think, what most of us already know, that we're doing a great job or that you all are doing a great job and our teachers are. Thank you. Our last presentation is an update on the work of the Redistricting Study Commission. Dr. Dowling?
Good evening again. Thank you, Dr. Winston, Vice President Cooperman, and board of the members of the Board of School Trustees. Thank you for this opportunity to present a Redistricting Study Preliminary Report. We are five months into the commission's work, about five months. And I thought this would be a good time to provide a preliminary report on the commission's work so far and where the work will be heading. I want to highlight some key takeaways, which would be the focus of my presentation tonight. I will provide a timeline of the phases of the redistricting study, both the phases we've completed so far and our future work. Also really want to highlight that all redistricting scenarios that we've studied and will study are based on input input from the board, from the public, and from the Redistricting Study Commission members. And my final takeaway is I want to really highlight tonight what the end product of the commission will look like, which will be a report that we will share. And I'll share some some details of that report in my presentation. Starting with the timeline, really, these are our formation phases of the commission. Looking back to February of twenty twenty four, that is when the board passed a resolution to study redistricting. That led us to in November of twenty twenty four, when Preston Smith from Business Information Services, he presented on fourteen scenarios for redistricting, which led us to December of twenty twenty four, when the board identified two priorities for redistricting, which were balancing socioeconomic status and reviewing cost effectiveness of the current scenarios and any scenarios that would be studied. In March of twenty twenty five, the commission was officially informed, and I'll talk more about that in a few slides. And in April of twenty twenty five was when the work really got started with the commission. And we focused with some work on our project charter, which I'll highlight on our next slide. The project charter really helps define the scope of the work of the commission, including its purpose, which is to study redistricting as a mechanism to balance socioeconomic status across MCCSE schools while also considering cost effectiveness of both current and any scenarios that we study. We really wanted to clearly define what success of the commission would look like in our project charter. And some criteria for success was to be ensured that we considered what considerations it would take to achieve improved socioeconomic balance across our schools. We wanted to make sure that the commission reviewed and studied factors and informed cost effectiveness of our buildings. We wanted to make the students and families at the heart of all of our considerations. We also wanted to include it to study some other important criteria such as impact on transfer policies, building utilization rates, and strategies for managing and focusing on both current enrollment and projected enrollment, make that a really important part of our commission's work. Looking now to what our end product of the commission will look like to preview that, the end product of the commission, as outlined in our project charter, will be a report from summarizing the commission's work from multiple parties, because the commission really is the ones who will be driving the input of that report. The report will include an evaluation of all the redistricting scenarios that we've been studied throughout the entire commission's work and the impact that the commission determined that those scenarios would have. Our report will include a thorough study, a thorough write up of the factors that the commission studied that impact cost effectiveness and the key things that they determined. and the key things that they determined. It will also include a corporation analysis from our commission members of building usage and capacity and what we learned through, um, studying those items. I want to highlight here, again, our, uh, commission members. I've talked about this before, but I think this is such a critical piece of our commission, I wanted to highlight it again. We have ninety-two members of our commission. We have broad participation across affiliations. We broadly, um, broadcasted the, uh, and advertised the formation of our commission, and we did this through public surveys, through email, media coverage, that's a Herald Times article that was really helpful in us drawing interest to the commission. You can see we have, uh, a broad, um, participation. We have fifty-eight current parents, eight former parents. We have community members, teachers, current teachers, former teachers, support staff members and principals, all to really, uh, make up this, um, make up our commission. Returning to our timeline, this was in, in one of our early phases in April, where our work really focused on helping the commission, um, define and understand the board's priorities, which I had talked about earlier. We also wanted to share a lot of data, really give some of the formational information and data that they needed to get the work going. I also want to highlight that how research has always been an integral part of all our meetings. Their, the commission leadership has brought, uh, research and best practices about redistricting to our commission members. And during their discussions, there's been really great questions that have led to us going back and seeing, uh, bringing back to them research and data and, uh, best practices that they've asked us about at future meetings, which really been part of the collaborative process. In May, the commission members, we recognize that the board's priorities, um, were really valuable, but we also needed additional criteria for studying redistricting scenarios. This is where through commission meetings, um, and through a public survey where we had over three hundred and thirty-three public responses from our community, we're able to add additional criteria to study our maps. Um, and the, um, after, um, taking all the input from the community, we, as commission, we determined that these four considerations, which I have outlined on the slide there, are capacity, resource allocation, class sizes, student well-being, which the commission, commission has really defined as minimizing student reassignment, transportation in neighborhood schools or community schools concept. Those were the four considerations that we really wanted to use while evaluating redistricting, um, scenarios or maps. And that work was completed in May. At that point, our next step in May in our commission meetings was to take the board priorities and the community considerations and develop a rubric that we could use to evaluate redistricting scenarios. So we spent time there coming up as a commission with operational definitions for that rubric, which led us to, in May, where we started evaluating and reviewing and studying redistricting scenarios. The selection criteria for which maps we included was that, uh, maps, uh, either would align with the board's top priorities, or either they came from our demographer, Preston Smith, or that they were scenarios requested by our commission members. All the maps that we have studied have come from, from those selection criteria. They always have been driven from public input. This is an example of one of the maps that we've studied so far, just to kind of give you an idea of the process. We've studied almost thirty maps at this point, and this is one of them. This is SES one, which is one of our many attempts to balance socioeconomic status across our elementary schools. The reason this one was included because it aligns with the board's priority. Um, some data points that will be included for this map and all maps, just to highlight some of the data we've used. We've, uh, included the data of the percent of free reduced lunch, um, students at each school under that scenario. The number of students or the percentage of students who would be reassigned under that particular scenario. The utilization rates of each elementary school, as outlined in that particular scenario, and as well as the median distance from students' homes to school. Returning to the timeline and kind of showing some future work of the commission. As we move towards, um, this fall, we are going to take those thirty maps, and we've narrowed them down to a smaller number based on how the commission evaluated them using our rubric, and we will study those smaller number of maps in more detail. That will naturally lead us, um, to seeing, uh, how those maps, um, play out at the middle and, and, uh, middle school and high school levels at our secondary level. So we will then turn our attention to studying, um, redistricting scenarios for the high school level, how those, um, elementary maps translate to that. And then in the spring of twenty twenty-six, we will, uh, we will write up a report based on the commission's work, um, summarizing it, and we anticipate sharing that with the public and the board in the spring of twenty twenty-six. And I'll share now, again, a little bit more about what that report will include. At that time, for the board's consideration, we will, um, the board's consideration and determination of next steps, our report, um, from the commission will include an evaluation of all the scenarios that we studied and their impacts. Really, everything that we learned, um, through that process of studying those maps. We will include what we've learned about the factors that impact cost effectiveness, as well as we will include what we learned about, um, through our corporation, corporation-wide analysis of building use and capacity, through our study of the, the maps that we've included in our study. Turning to my key takeaways, I wanted for this, um, preliminary report on the Redistricting Study Commission, I wanted to share the timeline of what we've done so far and what we're, we, um, working on next. I wanted to include, uh, uh, information about how all the scenarios we included are directly from public input, including the board, the public, or the Redistricting Study Commission members. And I wanted to share, um, what our end product would look like when the, we finish the work of the commission. Thank you. This time I'd be happy to take any questions about the commission.
I think we're just waiting, anxiously waiting to see what they come up with.
Uh, Dr. Dowling, I know you said that in your final report, one of the things that you'll report on is cost effectiveness, but, um, will your report also include, um, the, uh, will, will it also address balancing SES?
Yes, absolutely. It's going to include everything that we've studied. We will write up, we will talk about the maps we've studied and what, what the commission members determined, um, in their studying of those maps, as well as, you know, what, um, what data related to cost effectiveness was determined, um, for each of the maps that we've studied.
And also, I know that, um, previously, when we were, uh, when we were doing some of those maps, when we were considering the, a merger, um, there were also costs associated with, um, sort of that transition, and especially in light of our current fiscal challenges. Um, will we also get some information about what the cost would be to, to implement a redistricting plan?
I'll defer to Dr. Winston on that one. You know, I, I really made the, the focus of the commission's work outlined, as I talked about in our project charter, um, which has been really taken from, you know, the board, um, wanting us to study redistricting and consider cost effectiveness. Next steps would be, um, I think, would be, um, outside the scope of the charter. I think our, our work would be, what is studying redistricting, what did, what, what can we learn related to the, you know, the board's priorities? And, uh, include the public's input through the considerations and, um, share a report that, that details, like you said, what we've learned about redistricting in our corporation, what we've learned about cost effectiveness. But in terms of exact financial figures, I think that would be outside the scope of our, our, our work.
And Dr. Dowling is absolutely correct. That is outside of the scope, but depending upon the conversation and the discussion and the direction of the board, then we would certainly be positioned to look at some of that additional information. Um, to do so now would be highly premature because we, we're looking at thirty different scenarios, and it'd be very difficult and time-consuming. We would get nothing else done if we were to try to calculate the cost of thirty scenarios. But once we get down to a, a number that you all would want us to consider, that would be the point in time that we would begin to conduct some, uh, fiscal analyses.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Good, because we definitely didn't have that information. They didn't have that information either of where we're at or what was coming down the pike, so there's, uh, other things to consider that we didn't have before.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Dowling?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the work. Everyone's continuing to do on that. That's a lot of folks in the room to talk about it, so.
Yeah, again, I just want to thank the commission members again. You know, it's been, um, they are all, um, committed to doing the very best work that we can for our community. I really appreciate the time and, and all the time that they've given up for this work.
Thank you, Dr. Dowling. Dr. Winston, do you have anything else on, in this part, not, not to get ahead of ourselves?
Nothing else on this part.
Uh, does the board have any comments or reports that you would like to share?
I think we've talked enough.
I agree.
Yeah.
Um, uh, uh, thank you, everyone. And finally, Dr. Winston, do you have any additional information you'd like to share with us tonight?
Two pieces of information. Um, the U S News and World Report came out within the last couple of weeks, last few days, and it, um, indicated that the best high school rankings for Indiana. I am proud to announce that Bloomington High School South ranked number fourteen, and Bloomington High School North ranked twenty-eighth of the four hundred and thirty-seven Indiana public high schools that met the criteria. In addition, Child's Elementary is ranked twenty-fifth, and Jackson Creek Middle School is ranked tenth in the state of Indiana. So I think that's an additional reason to celebrate, so if we can give them all a round of applause. And my final update is really regarding our ribbon cutting for South Soccer Field. On Monday, August twenty-fifth, we celebrated the completion of Bloomington South's new turf soccer field with a ribbon cutting ceremony held before the girls varsity soccer game. If you haven't had a chance to see this, this amazing field yet, it is beyond outstanding. This project reflects one of our district's six strategic priorities, ensuring state-of-the-art academic, athletic, and performing arts facilities that support student success, providing them with greater opportunity. The key word that I really want to emphasize here is opportunity. A high-quality education means more opportunities, more academic options, and more curricular and extracurricular offerings, which simply increase the ways that our students can learn. Facilities like this soccer field create spaces for our students to thrive, connect, grow, and develop. Spaces like this create opportunities that all of our students deserve. From a stewardship perspective, this investment makes financial sense as well. This new artificial surface is estimated to cost only seven percent of the annual cost to maintain a grass field of its same size. And unlike grass fields, this new surface will allow us four times as much usage throughout the year. Rain or shine, our teams can practice and play, the space can be used for additional extracurricular activities, and our community can enjoy consistent, high-quality programming. I want to be clear about how this project was funded. Through the strategic use of bond funding, we were able to complete this project while protect, while protecting our core operational dollars. Using bonds to fund building and construction projects is a fiscally responsible practice that school corporations use to afford large facility investments that could not be paid for out of our operations fund. This demonstrates our continued commitment to being responsible stewards of public resources while investing in the facilities that will benefit current and future generations of students. And so here you just see a picture of the field, which, is that not beautiful? And if you turn to the next slide, then you just see the celebration of our ribbon cutting last evening. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Fletcher, to Mr. Fleener, to the entire board. We could not have pulled this off, um, in the timeframe that we had without your ongoing support. And, and certainly, we're very excited to be able to see our students and their thrill and excitement of participating and practicing and now performing on their brand-new field, so I just want to say thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Winston. I, I was hoping he'd be here tonight, but last night at the ribbon cutting, I forgot to thank Sam Fleener, our Director of Facilities. It's his title, so if you could pass that along to him, I'd appreciate it.
He worked so hard and so tirelessly to make sure this came off.
And I, I think we all appreciate it, so please extend our thanks to him.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Winston. Um, the next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. We are adjourned. Thank you.